Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the September 2021 Meeting of the Planning Commission. I'll start by taking attendance. Barbara Higby.
Here.
Suzanne Spellin.
Here.
Sarah Wangert. Roddy Yagan.
Here.
And Anthony Moen. Here. And first item on the agenda is adoption of the meeting minutes from the August 18th meeting, which I believe were posted online and have also been circulated to the Commissioners. So. I don't know if anybody has any comments on the minutes or if they just want to make a motion to accept them as presented.
Move to approve.
One second.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The minutes are approved. Okay. Moving on to the first item on the old business part of the agenda. This is PLPC 2021 14 Kings Landing 2, and my understanding from staff is that the applicant has requested that this matter be adjourned to next month's meeting.
That is correct. That's what we've been told recently by the applicant to be tabled to the October 20th meeting.
Okay. And. The Commissioners are agreement. I think we can just make a motion for that adjournment and move on to the next part of the agenda.
Motion to adjourn our table till next, till October meeting.
I'll second it.
Of Barbier.
Sorry.
I'll second.
Suzanne Spellin.
Aye.
Sarah Wangert. Roddy Yagan.
Aye.
And I, I vote in favor as well. So the matter is adjourned to October 20th. Is that?
Yes.
October 20th, 2021. Okay. Moving right along, the next item on the old business part of the agenda is PLPC 2021 33. This is 494 River Street. Is the applicant present?
Yeah.
Hey, how's it going?
Whichever way it goes. So you can pull that right out and just like.
We good? There we go. Yeah, thank you for, for having us back. Commissioners, we're First Columbia, representing Fitzgerald OZ LLC for the development of 494 River Street. It's a former. Now it's a vacant lot. Proposed development is a five-story self-storage building as a continuation of our adjacent use of 500 River Street self-storage. And this is the public hearing portion of that. Commissioners, have any other questions from our submission last month?
Is everyone here on the commission present for that?
Yeah, we were all here last month.
Want me to kind of redo the narrative?
Have there, have there been any changes over the?
No, no, no changes since last meeting. Our request for this meeting would be getting conditional approval for that use pending our variance. We're trying to get it next month zoning meeting.
So you're on the zoning board.
Around the zoning agenda for next month.
For October.
What's the change you're going to be requesting from ZBIA?
It's the setback variance that I need for the rear setback against the alley.
Okay.
Perhaps the Commissioners recall that. I think there were two issues when this was in front of you guys for August. One was the, the need for a variance in the rear yard. I think code is 20 feet and I think the applicant's looking for 15 and a half. And then I think the other comment was about the architecture and the facade and more detail on, on that.
Right. So we had asked at the last meeting that you provide building elevations that provided a bit more detail of what the building will look like. And so that request holds true. So if you would submit that between now and the October 20th meetings, that would be appreciated. I, I would like to just add a, I think I'm actually looking to Aaron to add a little clarification to the setback variance request was based on the location of the existing foundation wall. Is that?
Correct.
Correct? And so. It seemed like there was a bit of ambiguity regarding whether that foundation wall would actually be used. Or I'm remembering it wrong, but are you indeed constructing the new building on top of that foundation?
That, that is our intent. We're getting it tested and make sure that it has the load bearing capacity to hold up that rear elevation of the building facing the alley, but that is our intent to reuse that foundation wall.
Yep.
Yeah. If, if they are able to reuse the foundation, that may, may negate the need for the setback.
Right.
But if they get the setback and discover that they need to rebuild the wall, you know, forever, they would be able to build the wall within.
A little more flexibility.
Right, right.
Okay. All right. Yeah. So I would just reiterate my request for more detailed building elevation.
Sure.
Can you run me through the access for, for customers or patrons on where their parking and loading larger things from?
Right. So they park primarily on the River Street side. We have that large courtyard space between this building, this proposed building. The, what we used to call the carriage house of 500 River Street is the setback three-story structure. About 30 or 60 feet off of the River Street side and then 500 River Street proper to the north. We're proposing parking in that space. You can walk into the storage office, which will be behind the, what's existing, a overhead door on the west facade of the former carriage house. Go rent your unit and then the manager of the store can direct you to whichever building your unit is actually placed in. So if you're in this new building, the 494, we'll just walk you outside. There's a entrance door on the north facade. Facing that office space and get in that way. Go up stair towers or if you have a larger set of items you need to bring into this building, you can drive around the rear side. Drop it onto grade there, which is at the alley height and be this building second floor and bring it in. There's an elevator back there to bring it up and down.
Okay.
Just trying to think of any functional suggestions that we could offer. Access or anything like that.
One, one of the other comments. If I recall correctly, was the, the parking that was being proposed wasn't shown on, on the, the plan from August. That's now being shown on the site plan.
Yeah.
I don't know if Dash, do you have any comments on that? I don't, I don't have any comments on, on that.
No, we did not.
Is there any illuminated signage on the side of the buildings?
I just happen to be looking at the elevator.
Not, not proposed on this building, no. More likely we'd place that on the west facade of 500 River Street as the main storage building, which will be online sooner than this.
No further questions or comments.
Well, I think our preference is to have clarification on those things before, before we make the vote for even a conditional approval. So. My inclination is to just table it, put it on the October agenda. Hopefully by then.
Yeah, we'll, we'll get you those revised. The side rendering.
Right. Miss you care. Yes, absolutely. Are there any members of the public who are available or here who want to comment on this project? All right. So we're hearing no public comments, then. As against the, the motion table to October 20th.
I'll make a motion to table this proposal until October 20th hearing.
I second.
All right. Moving to a vote. Barbara Higby.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wangert.
Yes.
Roddy Yagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moen, yes. The application is tabled to the October 20th meeting. Moving on to PLPC 2021 34. This is the bargain block. It's the same applicant.
Hi again. Dash, can you pull up that set too?
Sure.
Any particular drawing you'd like?
Um, you can go to the site plan if you want. I can just jump around to each building. So this is the next step in our master plan for our waterfront district of Troy that we've been working in the last 15 years or so. So it's a combination of mixed-use properties that all complement each other. And it's important to try and do all of them together because they support each other from a use and a parking standpoint. So I guess I'll start with the senior housing project. 549 River Street is at the north end of this site plan. So looking to your left. It's 120 units, 125,000 square feet. New construction on a currently vacant site right now on the river. Currently. Is some parking for our office building at 547 River Street. Just across Vander Heiden Street from this proposed one. Think it's a. It's a need for our neighborhood to have some more scaled housing, especially with this kind of size. And it will help. Offset some of the parking use and get more utilization out of it being next to a commercial office building at 547, which is the next one I'll go to. For that, we're going to do some building upgrades, which is not really part of this submission, but the more important piece of that is a building addition from the ground at the south end, close to the Coller City Bridge for a indoor rock climbing gym. 23,000 square feet in total space occupied, but it's a new metal building. We have to do some, some creative cladding of the outside of that to kind of satisfy the historic component because it is in addition to the historic 547 River Street. Which has been. Made note to us as eligible for nomination on the National Register of Fixed Store Places, which is our intent to do the tax credit program for that building and across the street at 558. The Rock Gym is important to have. A waypoint for people to go to in this neighborhood. Right now it's just office use and then you have the hotel on the other side of the bridge. This really drives more activity there, especially at nighttime when people are done with work. It activates the streetscape, but it also can be a beacon to people coming across the Route 7 Bridge. Do some creative lighting to it and kind of make it an attractive entrance to the city as you come across and up and down River Street. It's kind of continues that. Redevelopment north on, on river from this building and the stuff that we've worked on down here. And then across the street, finally is our bargain grocery building, 20,000 square feet, former Smith Beauty warehouse space. That's important for our plan because it really satisfies a lot of needs. Right now, the, the neighborhood of North Central is one of the poorest in the whole capital district. As you look at it statistically, and it's also considered a food desert by the USDA where many of these residents within North Central is a census tract, don't have access to healthy food from. Whether they can't get there by walking distance or they don't have cars to drive somewhere to a full supermarket, which this is to access. Just regular services that are essential and goods that are essential. So we wanted to use this. Master plan opportunity to have three uses across from each other on River Street and Vander Heiden that could complement each other. Kind of help bring some opportunity to the neighborhood and some further investment to. Kind of pull redevelopment north because it's needed in this neighborhood. Right now it's kind of starting to come this way from downtown, but want to kind of lead the charge going further across the Kuzic Street area. Make it a destination along the waterfront, which we're working with the city on getting the bike trail extended behind all of these properties. Kind of helps reunify everything because right now it's tough to go up and down River Street. You're crossing active traffic and it's, it's a little precarious sometimes, but this helps solidify the. The waypoint along all of our connections. We're trying to reestablish and make the city kind of tied back together again, which is important to us. Know if the Commissioners had questions on our prior submission from last month.
Um, you're speaking about access to the sites. You, you just mentioned the bike trail. You mean the waterfront bike, bike trail will be tied in along that point. Okay. Are there any plans for installing like those, those rental? I don't know if it's city bike or is there any like bike access planned for that space?
We were asking for CDTA to put a new station.
And that was going to be.
On River Street.
Yep.
But they're the authority to go to for that. I mean, we've worked tightly with them on some of our other developments and that's an easy request to make for, for those guys. But it does make a lot of sense because you want to be on that path to, to use that form of transit. I think it's great to have those going up and down the, the River Walk.
It is.
Within reason. Like sometimes there's a clash between pedestrians and bikers. They don't always get along. There's a speed difference, but.
Yeah, it, it'll be a big focal point for how the, the site gets accessed. I think a lot of Troy would be excited to have a grocery store, you know, within the city limits.
We said that too, and the bike or. The, the Rock Gym, that customer that climbs there, I think is pretty apt to use the bike trail. So we figured trying to face that towards the river made more sense than just having it off of River Street.
Yeah.
That's where a lot of the access comes through anyway. From, if you get off of River Street on either side of the bridge to come into those surface lots, that's where you're going to walk from.
Yeah, I think connecting across River Street and then also giving some thought to how, how pedestrians will cross Kuzic, the bottom of Kuzic underneath Route 7. I'm just seeing that well laid out. I, I haven't looked at what crossing designs you have in there. I don't know if anyone else has thoughts on that. Yeah, I'd like, I would like to see some, something within the plans to show the pedestrian crossings. What, will the, will any of the project require any impact or cause any impact to the city's interceptor line, the storm combined storm sewer line? I'm not sure if it overlaps it. Will, will any of the excavation be overlapping? Okay. And from my guesstimation of it, it's not changing the impervious square footage or, or it is. Okay.
We are taking.
A little. Okay. So does the analysis currently show any need for a stormwater detention system?
No, we're talking.
Okay.
So Roddy, you were just asking about pedestrians. Flows, right? And where you would be interested in seeing pedestrian crossing.
Right.
I think I'll, I'll just reiterate, like, it's really. The parking, the drive patterns behind the apartment building are. I, I understand them, but they're a little bit convoluted. You're doing what you have to do to get the number of spaces in there. But yeah, show us how. How these active adults are going to safely get from their cars to the building. And ideally, how they're going to move south to the Rock Gym. I, I, I'm not saying it facetiously, right? I think there's going to be travel through there on foot.
Oh, that, that's part of the point of doing the project, right? Sarah is getting activity there. You want it to be walkable. But. We can display that if you like.
Thank you.
Definitely. So the, the west side along the river is probably not that much of a question. People will walk up the river, the walkway, the pathway to get to all that stuff. It's crossing that point. Or pedestrian traffic that comes from a little further east in the city that doesn't want to walk all the way down to the river, then over, then up to get to the grocery store, just making the crossing there. Potentially something. Could be offered.
I think the city is working on. Some planning to get people, you talk about from like hillside neighborhoods, north and south to come.
Basically just the south side of, of the overpass to the north side without having to come all the way down to the river. If there's anything within.
Well, if they're going to the grocery store, they just stay on the sidewalk on the east side of River Street and go up to the front door of the grocery store, right?
People coming from further east, but that's okay.
I think, yeah, I think it's going to start like. It's really exciting and I think it's going to start to feel like this urban campus somehow and you want people on their feet. So I, just make it a little more clear to us how you're going to do that.
Um, cart, cart storage, probably a, you know, nitty gritty detail at this point, but that'll be important to see.
They're supposed to go and there's a vestibule addition we want to do on the north side where they're supposed to stay. We're not really encouraging people to take them outside because they end up all over the place. So they'll have the poles on them to stop people from taking them out of the building itself.
Okay.
So trying to contain them that way.
Having dug into like trash or anything like that, where the waste area is. Where, where's the waste area for the grocery store?
Most likely in the south parking lot. As you go towards Kuzic Street. It might not be delineated as a dumpster enclosure, but. It's on the north side. That was it. Thank you, Dash.
Um, do you know if there's any plans for like a cafe space within the restaurant or I mean, within the grocery store? Not within the.
We did have some plan for the second floor space facing River Street because you have those windows along that facade. It's a lot of nice natural light. And there's a prep kitchen upstairs to do. To serve that space, but also do prepared foods for the market downstairs to, to sell out of the cases down below.
I don't have the other questions.
Okay. Any other Commissioner comments at this time? All right. Well, I'd like to open it up for public comment. If there's any members of the public who are here to speak tonight about this project.
I'd like to speak. I'm on Zoom.
Hello.
Hi.
For attending.
Sure. Thanks for having multiple streams. My name is Amy Halloran and I've worked in food in Troy for 20 years.
Ms. Halloran.
And.
Please state your address for the record. Thank you.
Oh, sure. 221 10th Street. So I also live in the affected neighborhood.
Thank you.
Yep. And you know, as a resident and someone concerned with food in Troy, I'm kind of confused about having another supermarket so close to Save-A-Lot. Um. I wonder, you know, yes, development, urban campus, all that. There's a lot, it sounds like there's a lot of excitement, but it sounds like a bit of an odd package to go for another bargain supermarket and a rock climbing gym. With, within blocks of an existing shopping area. And I just. I, I'm surprised to, to hear of it. I'm, you know, I'm kind of excited about another grocery store because more retail access is good, but I also wonder at its placement. So close to an existing functional supermarket, yet it doesn't have, you know, really different characteristics, at least from its name. I'm not sure if it's a full-service grocery store. But it's not, it doesn't seem to be. I mean, the word bargain, bargain and save, that sounds like it's of the same stripe. Can you answer the questions as to why? Why we'd have another similar grocery store so close and?
Amy, if I could answer your questions, what I would ask you to do is look at Bargain's facility in Utica, which is the first one they did. Different category than a discount store, like the one that's in that plaza. The USDA actually excludes those from their cohort of retail facilities when they look at food deserts. So it's more of a Whole Foods style setting instead of Dollar General. What was the one that's up there? I.
It's Save-A-Lot. It's Save-A-Lot.
It's a different style of operation. Is, I would say it's not comparing apples to apples.
Okay. Does it have a full range of produce and will be accepting EBT and?
Yes.
Okay.
No, they're, they're a great model. So what Mike Savella, who founded it, did was if you are a patron that goes there and you try to shop, but you don't have the funds, he'll give you a card from the store that just lets you ring out like any other person and doesn't ask a dime for it. It's a great give back. The way he can do that is by getting enough business through the store to make enough money to. To make enough money to afford the handouts, basically is, is how they structured it. And he's a very good source or sourcer of his produce, his, um. His regular grocery goods and just the regular essential items that people look for in their houses every day. And he's able to get them at such competitive pricing and sell it for so cheap that pretty much anyone in any walk of life can afford to go there. And even if you have no money, he just. Lets you go there and buy it like you're, like you have it. Um, so it's a really great thing he's created. We wanted to bring it to North Central because we looked at the whole capital district and said, this is the most need, the most in need census tract for this type of offering. And that's really why we're trying to, to put it in this location. There is that retail plaza up whose street from us. It isn't a different census tract and it is. Not including any type of grocery store that fits the USDA's requirement to not make this a food desert, which is why we said this, this should go where we're trying to put it.
Huh. I, I wonder what doesn't allow Save-A-Lot to be a full service grocery.
I don't, I don't know. I was trying to read that in the USDA's definitions of the whole program to categorize it, but that's just how they delineated it.
Because.
They took out bodegas and smaller like neighborhood.
This is not a, Save-A-Lot is not a neighborhood.
No.
You know, bodega, it's a, it's, it's got a full produce section. It's got meat. It's got dairy. It's got eggs. It's got everything. So that's really confusing. But one thing I hear, I heard you say that. Yes, when I asked about EBT, but then you offered this other realm. I just wanted to make sure.
They'll take that benefit, but if you don't have that, or if you just don't have an EBT, they'll just let you shop there.
Okay. I wanted to make sure that EBT is covered. Okay. And what about, um, how many jobs is it going to offer the neighborhood? We have a pretty big, as you know. Um, you know, unemployment rate in North Central, quite a lot, you know, unemployment and poverty rates. Um, as, you know, someone worked, who's worked with people in poverty for a long time, I'd love to know. What kind of opportunities it offers residents in terms of working there?
I, I can get that for you if you'd like me to share that with you. I don't have it tonight because it's not really a planning thing. It's more of a, um, idea kind of metric. But I'm happy to share that with you if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that would be really good for people in Troy to know. And, you know, maybe for all the. All of the, um, the parts of this complex, you know, trying to understand what. What work development opportunities this offers would be really helpful.
If, if I can piggyback on that comment, um, about thinking about the number of jobs, has there been any thought given to maybe allocating space? Uh, for the grocery store within the footprint of the grocery store for collaboration with local farms, local, uh, supporting local produce or anything like that? Or collaborations with, I know we have community gardens. There's one along, what is that, Eighth Street? Then there's, I think, one in South Troy a little bit. Is there any thought about local? Co- collaboration space?
It's, it's a better question for the operator bargain grocery, but I know their leadership has communicated that yes, they're absolutely willing to work with local sourcing of any of that kind of stuff.
And I'm not sure within the planning commission, what the limits are on, on things that we could say, you know, should be carried as, as. Requirements for such a construction that, you know, 500 square feet had to be allowed or whatever, if, if that's even a possibility or not.
I don't know, Andy. What do you think?
Probably not.
You can ask.
I don't, I don't think we can require it, but we can certainly discuss it.
The thing I really like about this project is that it isn't like, like just a cohesive plan. It's what you could put together and it serves so many different kinds of things. I think it's great. The Save-A-Lot does not serve down the hill and it's not a real market. It's just not. So, and, and that's what people go to the one they want to go to. You don't just plan, oh, people will go to this one or they'll go to that. So I, I just think it's great. I like the diverse. The rock gym. I won't personally be doing it, but I like it. So, and I think that, um, I've looked into some of what, um, you, you wrote about the, the bargain grocery. I think it's great.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Amy Klein and I'm the CEO of Capital Roots. And two months ago, we came before the planning commission. For final approval of the expansion of our Urban Growth Center, uh, which we are breaking ground on next month. The Urban Growth Center expansion includes an expansion of our good food market, which we currently have in operation in our facility. We have been operating that market since 2014 and because of the increased use of the market over the last. Six years, especially during the pandemic, when we saw a 600% increase in use of our market. Uh, and made serious investment in enlarging that market and made the decision to enlarge. And expand our project to accommodate a larger market for the community. We had plans to make this happen and are moving forward with those plans. And we, um, are coming here today to question the. The sense of adding a similar project, one block away from another project, both run by nonprofit organizations. Um, and whether or not, uh, A, the state would, uh, who have been generously supporting our project. Would, how they would feel about, uh, how this would impact their investment in that project. And also what the, um, potential is for one of these projects to fail. Because they're in such close proximity. The city of Troy is a food desert, period. The city of Albany, the city of Schenectady and so on. And this is the work Capital Roots has been doing for 46 years in this region. We know very well about food deserts. Save-A-Lot is, does not, um, is not omitted from the USDA, uh, census in terms of food deserts. That does. Count and any full service market would count. So I just want to clarify that. But, you know, there are certainly many locations in the city of Troy that could greatly benefit from a project such as, as this. Uh, I just really want to question whether this is the best place to make such an investment, one block away. From a project that is already in progress. And a large community investment has already been made by a nonprofit organization that has been here for 46 years, working hard for the city and its citizens.
Thank you. Are there any other members of the public who wanted to speak tonight?
My name is Stuart Jones. I'm a white woman resident of the city as is my father and grandfather. In fact, law downtown, 1898. In deep roots here, I care a great deal about this city. I have been involved with Capital Roots for many, many years. I am so proud of what they've accomplished. And I heard that another grocery store, a alleged not-for-profit grocery store, went to try to set roots one block away. I was flabbergasted. That is a recipe for economic disaster. It will have a negative economic impact on both stores, eventually leading to the failure of both stores. Capital Roots has served this community remarkably well. Forty-six years. You do not need to put a competitor to undermine its mission one block away from. This Sunday, the Times unit reported that the city of Troy received some $46 million. One of the purposes of that money was going to be to take down the Taylor Coop, to revise water leak Troy Bridge and to open up South Troy to the rest of the city. My brother lives on Third Street. He has to come all the way here. My father lived downtown. My grandfather lived here in Washington Park. Where is there a grocery store in South Troy? Why aren't they looking in South Troy to put? Not-for-profit grocery store. This is a full community. We should not be competing with one of Bedrock functions. This board, maybe it's run so competently. So well, so long. This planning commission has an opportunity. Do something that would suggest to this store that wants to come here, that they better look in South Troy, whether it's a poor welcome, where they can do some good. Where they're not likely to undermine the work being done by Capital Roots. So I urge you, table this for further investigation and discussion. This makes no goddamn sense to me.
I, I'd like to understand what the schedule looks like for both projects. Your, your project, when is the construction anticipated to begin and? Come, uh, Capital Roots.
Schedule in relation to their project?
Both. So yours as well.
I, I can't speak for what Capital Roots is doing. We would want to start as soon as we could, but we need approvals to go do that, obviously. Um, there's also the point of doing. The federal tax and federal and state historic tax credit program also requires me to go through SHIP-O and then National Park. So I need to get those approvals before I. Begin substantial rehabilitations of either structure.
So in all likelihood, you're looking at maybe spring, summer of 2022.
More than likely, late winter, early spring, hopefully. Although the park service is pretty backed up.
Were there any other members of the public who wanted to speak tonight?
Hi, my name's Danielle. Uh, I live at 2522 Fifth Ave, which is about a block away, uh, from the proposed grocery store and rock climbing gym. Which is actually exciting because I'm a rock climber. Um, but I do have some, I have actually a lot of questions and I don't know how to condense them. But my first question, I guess, is to address both at the same time, both the rock climbing gym. And the grocery store. And it's just like, is there a potential to work with? Local organizations, um, so that they can be stronger together instead of sort of combating each other? And what does that look like? I do know there's a large rock climbing population that has, there's plans in the works, like from, from friends of mine that want to also build gyms in the area. Um, so I wonder if there's potential for that, for. You to work with them as well. And, uh, with the grocery store, I know like there's the farmer's market. We have Capital Roots. We have the community gardens. Is there a way for that to also work together? Um. I think that's, I'll just leave that after now.
I think a gym is a great idea.
Thank you. No, there is certainly opportunity for collaboration. Um, thank you for your support in the, the gym. Our operator that's coming is actually wanting to engage with the climate community locally and understand. Once we do this one, are there other parts of the capital district that they should be looking to deploy to? Right now it's kind of a, a scarce commodity. There's only a few gyms. In the entire capital district to climb at for indoor. We said Troy made the most sense to, to put one because you have. One of their perfect customers that they explained to me was the engineering and the engineer professionally and the engineering student because rock climbing is all problem solving. It's, where better to put it than RPI's hometown, putting all of these engineers out and, uh. So absolutely, we'd love to engage with the public more and our operator would love to do so. To kind of develop more of these facilities around here and collaborate. Um, we would say the same thing about the grocery store. We actually had talked to Amy a while ago about trying to help her get her project off the ground. We don't want to be looked at as competing. We think we're totally different uses from what our offering is to what. Capital Roots does. And I hope we can get along being up and down the street from each other. For raps, we're absolutely open to, to collaborate with the community and the uses we're putting here are meant to build. Community by getting so many people down here into this location, but from up the hill, from up and down into North Central, from downtown. And even from outside of Troy, I think it's just a great spot to, to be at right on the water. There's no railroad tracks or highways that are separating us. It's a great place to. Have this, um, kind of nexus point of all this activity going on.
Hello, my name is Matthew Schuler. Um, unfortunately I no longer live in Troy. I work here still though. But, um. I was curious, uh, when I heard this, uh, when you talked about non-pervious surfaces. Um, and that they remained essentially the same with this construction. Is there anything being done to make things improve? The limiting runoff into the Hudson. I know that it's an important thing for the city of Troy. And the legal agreement with the, with the pool communities to limit runoff. And I just wondered.
Could you speak up? Sorry.
Certainly. I wondered if they had been made any improvements in limiting the runoff instead of just saying. It's pervious surfaces now. It's impervious surfaces now. It's impervious surfaces in the future. Are, is there? Anything being done to limit runoff and to improve the situation with the Hudson River, not make it just the same because it needs to be better? And I wondered if there was anything in this project that did that.
Does the developer?
Thank you for asking that question. You guys want to?
Chris Betty with First Columbia. Uh, yes, we're familiar with the Albany Pool, um, requirements. We are, uh, currently putting together a stormwater report for the project. That would, uh, them, you know, meet the phase two stormwater regulations for New York State and the city of Troy. Our impervious area, uh, disturbed area will be, it's very close to, uh, an acre. So the acre is the threshold between. A full SWIP and a basic SWIP. So we're just, uh, fine tuning that. Um. But we will be adhering to all the stormwater regulations of the state and the city. So.
So you do not anticipate needing a variance for the SWIP?
No.
So you intend to stay below the one acre disturbed limit?
That's where we think we are today.
Correct. Is the applicant or developer open to additional stormwater controls, um, and access storage as part of the project?
Sure, we're open. Um, you know, we're, you know, fighting the same fight everybody in the city is fighting. Um, it's, there's not a lot of room to do it. You know, we're on, the, the majority of our property is on the riverside of River Street. Um, so a lot of that does not. Go to the combined sewer that goes directly to the Hudson today. Um, so, you know, our summer design will reflect, you know, I guess what we need to do as part of a redevelopment plan.
Will the, the parking surfaces be reconstructed or simply repaved?
Repaved.
So just like a inch and a half.
Yeah, just an overlay.
An overlay. So. What I would say is there is always an opportunity to do underground storage systems, like ADS makes a, a closed. Stormwater system that basically slows dissipation into wherever it's sitting upon. How that would get worked in when you're only doing an inch and a half overlay or, or whatever overlay, um, is a different story, but. Definitely something I think.
Our stormwater report will reflect our design.
Okay.
And again, we're gonna meet all the requirements of the city and the state. And again, we're going to meet all the requirements of the city and the state.
Okay. I think as a commission, we need to start thinking about that regularly.
Before, before you step away, there there are some great little garden details that you identified for the driveway and the senior housing part of the project, but I don't see any for for the climbing gym.
That's, I mean. That's by design and I'll explain why because when you do the, the part two planning for SHIPPO and parks, if it was built in a environment like this where historically there were not a lot of plantings, they don't want to see that. So I can give you one that doesn't get sent to Washington. But I told my designer specifically, don't draw any of that before we show it to the regulator. So we'll, we'll dress it up before it's, it's final. But that's our reasoning why you don't see greenery on the 547 and 558 kind of front facades there.
Because historically there wasn't any.
It's a very weird thing, but I've heard it directly from the agencies that they don't want to see. Like we were going to do planters in front of the apron where you come into the grocery store. And my consultant and some people at SHIPPO off the record said, don't put those on there. You'll get in trouble in Washington when it makes it down there.
What, what if it's a requirement of approval? It's a condition of approval by municipality?
I'd have to somehow get around the National Park Service and having those published.
Hey, good evening, everyone. My name is Ian Lenny. I live at 54 Spring Ave. South Troy. I just want to comment real quick about the food and the proposition of building a second or planning a second grocery store in Troy. Because how we nourish a community is so important. Not unlike building a complete landscape, but building a community of food safety, food security is not as simple as just placing a grocery store where you think you might need food outlets. The World Health Organization describes food security in a very simple way, but it's elegant. They describe it as three pillars. The first pillar is distribution or access, which is what we think of when we think of food security, having places where people can go and get food. But two other pillars exist that are not as easily known. The second pillar would be production, how we get our food, where it comes from. As we all know, local food is extremely important to food security. Having food produced in such a vibrant and rich state like New York and having that then distributed close to home to New Yorkers is in the utmost important, especially as we move forward with such compending and complex challenges like climate change. And a second pillar or a third pillar is utilization, food knowledge. Not just having access to food is important, but how people understand how to use that food to feed their families and how to save that food for when tough times arise. A local company like, or nonprofit organization like Capital Roots has been doing something like that Troy for a very long time, as you are well aware. And if we want to really build an integrated, strong approach to food security and solving the problem of a food desert, it is necessary that we support organizations such as Capital Roots in their endeavors because it is well thought out, well planned out and really will build up Troy as a community. And that's all. Thank you.
Could I ask you a question?
Absolutely.
When is, and maybe you're not, somebody from Capital Roots, when is the Capital Roots marketplace expansion scheduled to occur?
I have no details on that. I'm not affiliated.
Okay.
We are breaking ground on our project next month and it should be, the entire project should be a one-year build.
Okay, and I'm, I'm sure this was before I was part of the board, so forgive me for asking you to reiterate some of this, but what's the square footage of, of that build?
Uh, Matt, I always forget.
Just ballpark?
What's the whole project? It's, it's, yeah.
I'm, yeah.
We were just here two, two months ago, so every, you were here, yeah. So everybody saw the project and I just want to reiterate that a primary function of what we do is to make local food available at low cost, half the cost of what you could buy it for in the supermarket. That is a main focus of our food access work and not providing seconds for things that are almost about to expire. So a very different model.
Hi again, I'm Danielle. I have another question about accessibility for also both locations. So the grocery store as well as the climbing gym. Accessibility can be location-based, but it can also be price-based and availability-based. So my question for the climbing gym is if it is a gym that's charging probably above $60 a month, probably. I would guess like closer to 80 for a membership. Is that going to be accessible to people in the neighborhood? And to people like in Troy, I guess? And then moving to the grocery store, what are the hours going to be? Will they be open at, like, open late at night or will they be open on the weekends? That's my.
Those are both questions more for my operators than me as developer, but I could find out for you if you're interested.
At some point in the review process, I think we will want to know the hours of operation for the businesses for sure. Who is the operator for the climbing gym? Are there any other members of the public who wanted to comment? I think that there's still some additional information that we're going to need before we can take any action on this. I think we just want to add anything, any further information? Do you want to have a request from the applicant?
Is there, is there any mechanism through which the planning commission? Is there any mechanism through which we as the planning commission can request them to coordinate on things like the, you know, the rock climbing communities? What they'd like to see out of it, just so that we know that as a commission, the, the built product aligns with what the community is looking for. That's intended to serve.
You, you can inquire of the applicant's efforts and communications with the community or specific segments of the community. They can provide that information to you if they choose. But ultimately, as a planning commission, you're reviewing the site plan in front of you, which is a little more two-dimensional than, than the question. In most instances, by letting the applicant be aware of the fact that you are interested in those communications will usually drive a discussion of what they were, or maybe even initiate those conversations in advance of a subsequent meeting.
Thanks.
I have a question for Dash. Does, does the applicant have the staff report?
That is correct. All applicants tonight have received the staff report.
Okay.
There were the staff notes on the, on the application as well.
Yes.
I know last month when we discussed this project, there was also some discussion around the truck access to the back of the grocery store site. Is the site plan that we have right now, is that set in stone? I know, I know there's some difficult considerations there. I was just curious if there was any update on that.
Yes.
Yes. So if you recall, the original proposal was to have the loading dock located off the back of the building consistent with the existing loading dock door that the back of the building currently has. That sketch there was our, our first attempt to get a little bit more direction on, you know, some of the concerns. What we, and I haven't provided it yet, what we've talked about was the blocking of the alley being concerned to the city. So we're proposing to slide that loading dock structure down the page so that the trucks are not blocking the entire alley. The goal would be to have a way to pass by. So we are going to revise that plan to reflect that.
Okay, so that'll be on the revised site plan.
Yes.
All right. Thank you. Okay, then I think at this time, we can. I think if nobody has anything.
I do. I'm so sorry.
Okay.
I, I, just because I didn't say it out loud, I'm going to say it out loud, even though I did last month. Similar to the previous proposal, please present to us far more detailed building elevations. That was completely omitted in this resubmission. We really need to see that. Thank you.
Are there any exterior features to the rock gym, like climbing components to it on the exterior of the building?
Well, I will just say that we've had comments from both the commissioners and from the public regarding connecting with members of the community, both in terms of the agricultural community, community gardens, as well as the rock climbing community. So it seems like that could be beneficial, just making sure that the project is successful. So it may come up again in future hearings. But at this time, I don't think we have anything further for tonight. So I think we can just adjourn this to the October 20th meeting if that's, that all for the applicant. All right.
I'll make a motion to table it until the October meeting.
My second?
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellen?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moen, yes. The application is adjourned to October 20th. Okay, we have one more item of old business to get to. This is PLPC 2020 50, 561 to 565 Congress Street. Is the applicant present?
My name is Redmond Griffin, my attorney.
Can you try to speak a little bit more directly into the mic just to make sure?
How's that come off? All right.
Thank you.
This is something that's dear to my heart because I've been by the site probably a thousand times in my life. This is ground that when the Congress Street reconstruction program was done five years or 10 years, years ago, they forgot about this whole thing, what they were doing. They eliminated parking in front of commercial structures that are on the beginning of Brunswick Road or Pauling Avenue, Congress Street. I'm not even sure which street they're on, they're located there. They've been there for 100, 150 years from the time that water power was the item that the city of Troy, which was very valuable for. As a result, there's no longer parking allowed on that stretch of land. My client is willing to buy the property, renovate the buildings, put in 10 one-bedroom apartments to try and rent them to students from RPI. We have been successful of getting practically all the parking that we need. We were at the zoning board last month and got the special use permit that we had to have to be able to put residential structures on the ground floor. I believe this is different than the last matter that you went through. In my mind, this is a simple thing. I asked for your approval tonight so we can get started on it. I'll be happy to answer any question. A revised site plan was submitted after the zoning board meeting.
There, there used to be a pizzeria, if I recall.
A pizzeria, Fox's, a grocery store was there for years and they've just uses that are no longer feasible.
So the retrofit would involve removal of all of the kitchen equipment?
Oh, yeah. The buildings will basically be gutted.
But you want the first floor to be storefronts, not?
Yeah.
I thought we required that, not.
They're, they're not going to be storefronts.
The applicant just received a special use permit from the ZBA to do residential.
You want, you want residential on the first floor?
Yes. They have, from the ZBA, they have residential on the first floor as an allowed use.
Okay.
So I, I think that's the simple question. Do you agree with the zoning board that allow this project to go forward on it?
The zoning board has made their decision, so we're constrained to go by what the zoning board approved.
Thanks.
I like it because the park is on the side. We were trying to go up with the building and that was a mess.
I, I'm sorry.
The parking is on the side now.
Right.
If they could not go in, there was no.
We, we are trying, we need one more parking space to satisfy it. We're trying all over to get another parking space, but it's not an ideal situation with the parking. It's off to the side.
I have some, well, I have questions, but before I express my, my questions, I concur. That's my neighborhood. It's so frustrating to see everybody go out of business because no one can stop their vehicle there. It's, it's ridiculous and it also means I don't have any pizza. So I understand it. I think we'd welcome more residents in that neighborhood. Even if it means grade level apartments. What I see in the proposal is some alterations to the exterior of the building. Suggesting some exterior insulated, basically stucco. I also see a note that suggests that if the planning commission were to encourage the use of brick, that that would be considered and I therefore recommend the use of brick veneer.
Adam will key the principle.
I love the idea of brick veneer, but having, trying to match a brick veneer to what is existing right now will never match up.
I know it won't. Don't even match it. Pick something that looks great with your original brick. This, I, the stove will.
It will never be uniform.
That's okay. I do it all the time. You don't have to match it. Find something that is compatible or a different material, but the, the stucco is I'm really concerned about that.
There is stucco right now currently like down the street. Screen. Green building on the left side. You also have to get nails line. But that is. I envision being moved to the first floor, the entire storefronts or systems on that speed. So do, it would just basically create a uniform facade to, I think it would look a lot better if you say, but you try to match old brick to. It would just look like piecemeal together. I honestly want to make the place look good, my own, myself. So I'm just trying to express my service to work. I'm not trying to be.
Can I just ask a quick question? When you're talking about redoing the front, are you going to redo the upper floors of the front or just the first floor? It's such a mess.
We were thinking just the first floor.
That's, that's good.
The first time I went, the first time I went in front of this board, maybe two years ago, the engineering guy sat right there. Yeah, you said to match the, um, break down the windows.
Yeah.
To make them look very same.
When they, when they retrofit that to storefronts, they gave you nice storefront windows.
Right, so if you put all the units down.
Yeah, you kind of have. Yeah, you kind of have windows that don't really.
Right, yeah, all that does is match. So, I mean, if you just bring it, we understand that's what we were going for. What you said, right, and then turn that, that EPHIS veneer, or. I mean, I could piece meal brick together and then paint it all the same, because with that, actually, it's looking. So that's what we were, that's what we're planning to do. We hope. I don't think.
So I, I, I will, I will make one more statement. This neighborhood has struggled with dilapidated buildings, both from neglect and from Irene 10 years ago. It's finally on the upswing with some rehabbed houses. And you have the potential, especially since it's on the corner, to really have a nice anchor. I would encourage you to get an architect to spend a day and just do some studies. It can be affordable, but I just don't think that stucco is the answer. I have another question, and it is simpler, I think. It looks like the, the proposed 10-vehicle parking lot is encroaching on neighboring property. So you've got parallel angled parking, and then, and, yes, thank you. So is that your property behind the, behind 567? Right. And, and, and why isn't that shown on the other document that was shared with us? There are three site plans here. Well, one survey and two site plans, and I can't quite make heads or tails of it. So right where it says J&amp;K Security Management LLC, it looks like you've got additional parking spots.
Right.
Unless I'm reading this wrong.
No, no, no. So to get the 10 spots, the nine spots, whatever spots there were, we, we had, we would have to get a, buy land or from that guy behind 560.
Nine, seven, 567?
Congress Street, which is the lands of J&amp;J Security or J&amp;J Security Management, you're saying? And so, he doesn't even know he has it.
So you guys are not under contract for that land?
Well, we don't have the approval, so we don't, we're not gonna buy land I don't have.
Yeah, but you're not under contract for it?
No, not for that fact that he can't, he can't be here.
You're not under contract on that. I assume you guys were under contract with that. If you're under the contract, you're proposing a project.
The parking is a requirement, so it has to be part of a whole project, right? The parking?
Yes.
Right.
Can't put it on.
Right, that's what I said, yeah.
So you guys would have to get under contract on that or amend this proposal to buy spaces. You can't amend this proposal. I've been over with your engineer. You need to have that land in order to have the turnaround. So you guys would have to be under contract. Then your proposal would be, you know, again, fixing the fact that there's three slightly different site plans, then your proposal would be right back to where it is today. You have to, you have to have a contract. Alright. Or easement, or some, some sort of.
Right.
Authority to be on that.
Or the other land, and I would have to present it as their own.
We, we tried everybody area to get another parking space. We only need one more parking space.
Well, the, the parking space, the one more that we're talking about.
How much parking is required for change of use?
I think you need one per unit, and we're be having.
One space per.
That's what I think we were talking about.
Yeah, we need 10 spaces.
Right.
But we, if we go ahead with the project, we know we can build the 10 spaces and rent nine spaces with bottom up. The 10 space may never have a parking space for.
But that.
So the lot currently shows, it currently shows 10, 10 additional spaces.
So we could, oh, we don't have that land right now.
But basically spaces six, seven, eight, and nine, six through 10.
This one looks like you could easily cut off to just stay on this one piece of property here. But you need, you need to have control over that.
Right, I guess so. If we had a contract with the contingency of zoning approval.
Contingency of a plan.
Correct.
I, 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 I didn't know, I thought you had, to me, it was like a, I guess contingency makes sense.
Yeah. Yeah, 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 yeah.
But we couldn't, like, I guess, in my past, because I'm still a newcomer.
Anywhere for the architecturals, you have the most anytime.
Alright, cool.
Before you guys leave, the connection between the, the lot and the buildings out front, I thought I saw a walking path here. Is, are, are tenants expected to basically walk out to Brunswick, then back down the pathway to get over to 561 and 563?
Over, down, or is there any kind of connection going there? Yeah.
Yeah.
The way it was spread. His idea was they would lock down, this Jason right here, this post, what corners there, right, lock down here, and then there would be a. Going down at least, well, just the first floor level, this block here, right here. Take down and build each two units right there. And then over here, you would actually have to go around for that, for that third unit right here. If that's not feasible, then obviously we just maybe go two units, but.
See. You mentioned that the courtyard is existing already, but it's labeled as proposed, so.
Yeah, it's already there. Yeah, it's there, ready, there's already a courtyard, there's a wall right here, that's already there, pathways there, it just needs to be redone. Asphalt, I want to turn to the brick, you know, pathway. You know, we get all the porches, I want to put like some nice shrubbery in there, make it nice. You know, seven units are feasible right now, I've done five, two I have to be done, because people have to move, I have been able to check out too. But I, the whole thing is I wanted to, you know, turn around.
Understood.
Three, four years, four years ago, when I, the guy.
Understood. So I think as Sarah mentioned, it would be helpful to get a little, get an architect involved. It sounds like the plans need a little bit of updating to reflect what you're talking about.
I just have one architectural comment, which I never have, because I have no sense whatsoever in architecture. But it just seems to me that the product, the EPHIS product, that is very durable, is it very durable?
What? If it's install, if it's installed properly, it can, it can have a lifetime of, say, 20, 25 years.
So it's not more durable than brick? Because I.
Oh, gosh, no.
I mean, like, in terms of durability, I put it up.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, that's what's on the, the courtyard Marriott next door, and we saw problems there.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, we're at a 3T is, I'm central app. Yeah, when I was in high school, 2002, I got my tux. Okay, and they put EPHIS front on there back in 2002. It looks exactly the same as it does right now.
I thought it was more durable.
The one problem with these tubes, the staining on it, right, it can stain and hold on to the, any, any color that.
I've never had any trouble with it.
I guess the one benefit to having it in this location, be, get to clean it, but still, yeah.
It's, it's a silly thought. Silly thought. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
So we're back to somebody, but getting an architect and figuring out how to make that first floor look better.
If it's gonna be EPHIS, it's.
I'm not, I'm rescind that.
Thank you.
Okay.
Though in my, in my only comment from engineering is just the. I repeat, the, we went back and forth.
You're satisfied?
Well, the, yeah, so the, the problem with this layout was that vehicles were gonna back out onto Brunswick, and we couldn't have that happen. So what the, can you scroll down to the next plan? What the next plan does, again, assuming that they can. Wrong direction. Would that allows vehicles, no, you're in the right.
Oh, sorry.
What that allows people to do is the vehicles that are parked on an angle, they can actually pull around, and that's enough space back there for them to, to do. Maybe not just a U-turn, they may have to do a three-point turn, but they can turn.
How do they actually?
And then head out.
And then you can, yes, you can head out and park, right?
So to access those spaces, you have to actually come all the way in.
You can, if you're in a rush, the park, you can pull in, back in. Okay, and then when you're going to leave, you've given yourself that task to do, or you do that. It just, cars, someone still will back out onto Brunswick, but that's not the applicant, right? He's provided for them not to do that. If they do that maneuver, that's, that's on them.
Right. On the other side.
Right, with parking on the hill, it's just, to me, you can't, it's a recipe for disaster. Add two inches of snow on the road.
Aaron, are you good with the drainage plan next?
The, well, the drainage plan that you're looking at is, is really conceptual at this point, but, yeah, we have no, they're gonna, they're gonna tie it into the, to the system. Yep.
Are there any other commissioner comments?
I would, was there a section, like, what, what's the subbase? What's the plan for the actual pavement for the lot?
Yeah.
We just, yeah, I guess a pavement, you know, parking lot, pavement, paved parking lot. I know that.
It'll be a durable surface. They don't, they don't have to, there's no minimum, it's private. It just can't be dirt, has to be a durable surface.
Okay.
Aaron, do you know if the last time this project was in front of the commission, we closed the.
Well, I, oh, this, I don't know if you, I feel like this is a new, a new proposal. But like Adam was saying, you know, he's, he was here a few years ago.
Yeah, no, it's 2020, I know, so.
Oh, oh, yeah, um, it was a while ago.
It was a while.
Yeah, it was a while ago. But again, like Adam was saying, he'd been here years prior.
Yeah.
Um, those storefronts have been vacant for quite a while, ever since you've owned it, I think.
And well, you mentioned about that pizza that was there, and there was chicken and biscuits thing there, I guess, too. Neither had success in those areas because of the parking. And there's a boutique on the corner of Brunswick in there that, you know, was there for maybe three months. And it has nothing to do with anything. There was a guy who was selling eBay stuff out of the first floor when the beach shop closed. But that, that went to nothing. So, I mean, I guess I'm just struggling to do something with this space. And, you know, say I can't come in an agreement with that guy on 567, 8, 9, whatever it is, for the other five parking, four parking spots. I'm always just wondering what else I can do with that space. Now that the city had, you know, the city did take away that parking in the front of it. You know, I think it's more of a deterrent, having nothing in there than, than, than having something in there, regardless of parking or not. I mean, if you advertise, if you advertise to, you know, what I was going for, and what's already across the street, you know, student parking, when I say student parking, student housing, then, you know, that's the only thing I could think of to, that could be viable in that area. Well, that doesn't require a lot of parking. So I, I, I ask, I guess I've heard, asking you, so I could get some ideas, too. What you guys could think could go into those storefronts, that would be accommodable to the board. I, I'm just throwing it out there, because I want to do something with the space. I have the capability and means to do it, and want to, you know, improve it.
You're, you're in a tough spot, because getting a variance to not have, if you go to variance for no parking, that doesn't really help you, does it? Because even if you don't have to provide the parking, your tenants are gonna want the parking.
Right, I know, I know.
I know, right, so, so, but I mean, so the only advice I have is that if you, you've gone to the ZBA, you've gotten the variance to provide the parking that you're showing here. If in the end you can't, negotiations don't make that viable, then you can at least go back to them for another variance, right, to get the parking even reduced further. Again, that doesn't really solve your issue. You're only, the only other way I can see to, to work something out would be, you know, getting into the rideshare business, working with CDTA on their bus, you know, bus passes and things like that. It's, it's trying to accommodate residents that don't have vehicles is really the only other thing you can do.
Contact the CDTA to.
I think there's a bus stop right there. Yeah, I mean, it, it would really be sort of like on your end, is that, oh, you rent for me, this stuff's included, right? Here's a pass, here's this.
Didn't even know that was possible.
Yeah.
I will tell you, I never see buses. Never.
On, on, on the street or, or?
I mean, it's, it's my neighborhood, and I never see the bus in my neighborhood, ever.
Pretty sure they have one that runs up that way.
I could be wrong.
To where? They turn on, they turn on Pauling. That's the only place, but they don't go out route two.
No, they don't. No, they wouldn't.
No, they come down the city, it's the only place the bus goes.
Get the RPI shuttle. It's, it is tough.
Well, that's what I'm, I'm saying in front of you guys, ask, actually for asking for advice. Obviously, I, I've been here before, and I've been wanting to do something with the space for a long time, and I just, maybe I'm just maybe trying to catch the chase about what I can do, and pick your brains, and what you guys think if it could be viable for it, being behind student housing, or, I mean, one time, someone said to me, make it like an artist studio. Well, that's kind of limiting my, it's very limiting in terms of people that could venture me. I mean, downtown, I think we'd be more attracted to that than uptown here.
It, it may be cost prohibitive, prohibitive, but potentially building a garage superstructure or excavating somehow to build.
We talked to Fred about, Fred, this. And, and it's just tricky up there to do any type of parking, requires touching those retaining walls.
That's the zoning board's decision, and if they would grant the variance, and if you think it can work, then.
Or you wouldn't even need another stop. I mean, you're, if you're, if you rent to students, they'll just cross the street and pick up the bus with everybody at whatever the, the Finelli Building is. Like, I don't, I can't remember what it's called, but you know, the student housing, the big student housing building.
Yes, right back there. Yep, yep.
The, the shuttle's there all the time.
Alright, yeah, right across trees, George's, Otto and the other companies, City Gruyere, which, like. But, so I, yeah, I don't know, I mean, further down, like, near, like, I guess another couple blocks, a block or two, is that the target that I'm talking about? Or the, I don't know.
Is there no potential to fit a structure?
I mean.
Well, it's a way, I mean, it's. My elevated structures, I thought. Yeah, I mean, I think that'd be well.
So, so there is a, that is on CDTA's Route 286, which runs from Griswold to Freer through downtown? If anyone is curious.
Thank you. And, and I'm really sorry, I'm talking like the, that building is right across the street, and you already know that it's not Polytechnic Residential Commons, yeah.
Yeah, I think it's a block down.
It is. It's a, it's a long block down.
No, okay, I, I can't.
So what, what are we gonna do?
Is, is you have to go back.
Okay, alright, I, I would say you need, you need, there's two, there's two ways for it. You, they both involve providing updated architectural drawings that be Sarah's requirements, well, the board's requirements. And then the, the options would be acquiring the land or a contract for the land that, for the parking that you're showing. Or if you go that route, you can't get it, then you can go back to the ZBA, say, hey, look, we've, here, here's letters from my attorney, we've written these people, they've, they've ignored us, you know, we need to move forward, we need you to reduce our parking. You know, we need to move forward, we need you to reduce our parking requirement further. In, in exchange for that, we are offering, you know, free CDT passes to any of our residents. We've worked with RPI, a lot of this will be student housing, there's a shuttle stop here, we don't think there's a need for parking in addition, you know, whatever, if you can fit in two spaces, fit in your two spaces, whatever it is.
Yeah, I mean, five space, the four spaces or five spaces.
Yeah, there's, there's.
You said there's a backing up problem.
Yes, there is, and I, I prefer not to have vehicles back out, and I'd be happy to tell the ZBA that I would prefer you not provide parking than provide parking like that, right? You know, um, and, you know, again, I, there's at least one other owner who's been in front of the planning commission with the exact same problem in that area. He owns, I think, two doors down from you, and he's got the, the only parking lot that's across from Stewart's there. And it's, you know, he uses it for all of his tenants. He doesn't have enough space there.
Yeah, what, what about that lot where the building, I actually condemned it, uh, across. I don't know anything about that lot.
It can't be used for anything. It's a, it's part of the agreement we have.
With FEMA?
Yeah.
Oh, landslide or something?
Yes, yeah, we accepted federal funding for that perpetuity that can't be destroyed.
So we gotta get updated.
All right, guys, I appreciate it. Thanks very much.
Are there any members of the public who want to comment on this proposal? Next, I think maybe we'll just table it indefinitely and then whatever you. Oh, I said, in that case, I think we may just table it indefinitely. You don't want to come back next month, I assume, right?
No.
It's up to you. We could, we could table it to next month's meeting so that it's on the agenda, or we could table it indefinitely, and then you need to follow.
I, I suggest table it to next meet, month, if they are unable to show up.
Okay, yeah, we'll, we'll put it on next month's agenda. If you're not going to make it, just let staff know in advance.
Good luck.
All right, we have a motion to table.
Motion to table till next month's meeting.
All right, Barbara, we had to step away, Suzanne Spillan.
Hi.
Sarah Lingard.
Hi.
Roddy Yagan.
Hi.
And I vote in favor as well. Proposal's tabled to October twentieth. Moving on to new business, we've got four items. The first is PLPC twenty twenty-one thirty-two ninety-five Hill Street. Is the applicant present?
Okay. Good evening. Thank you. My name is Bill Hennessy, representing the owner of the property. This project at ninety-five Hill Street is initially intended to be a, more of an environmental effort than anything else. The applicant, the owner wants to remove the gasoline service from the facility. It's currently actually under a remedial effort that Global Equities, Global, uh, out of Albany, they have administrative requirements to handle the remediation. And the tanks are proposed to be removed. They are older, they are all licensed fine with New York State, DEC. And they are also, DEC is also currently monitoring any remedial efforts there. But, um, the owner wants to remove the tanks and remove that environmental potential issue in the future. So, um, the, the, the project is really to maintain the store, maintain the site as is, but to remove the canopy. Remove the tanks, remove the piping. Uh, and remove the dispensers and all of those environmental elements that are potentially, uh, liability, potentially, uh, an environmental concern in the future. They propose to repave it similar to where it is now. They will repave, uh, probably, I think they have to go right to the curb line there. The property line is probably four feet or so, or five feet off the curb, depending on if it's Hill Street. Hill Street runs on the east side. Fifth Avenue runs on the west side, Adams Street is on the north side. And they have handicap accessibility existing along that, that east side. Uh, there's an existing ramp, uh, for handicap accessibility there. They do propose to, to clean the site as much as possible. They're not proposing any new structures, they're not proposing any changes to the building. It's, it's essentially remove the tanks and, and repave was the proposal.
Did you say the impetus for the project was an environmental?
Yes, yes, essentially the owner wants to remove the gasoline service from it. It's, it's an older service. It's not, it's not extremely financially feasible to maintain it now. The tanks are, are owned and operated, not owned by Global, but they're operated by Global as part of the lease for the, for the site. But, um, it is currently under an environmental remediation. It has been for, for many years. It's a ventilation sparge type system, which is currently monitored by the state. This will very, very possibly accelerate that and remove that problem for the future. So that's a benefit. So, um, they just don't really want the gas service there any longer.
So from an environmental perspective, it's more appropriate for the, uh, current construction to be removed entirely versus just abandoned?
Uh, yes, we would do a, a, a closure of the facility. I, I'm not quite sure the state would allow us to abandon it in place. We would remove it and the removal will be all in accordance with New York State DEC requirements for removal under the petroleum bulk storage regulations for New York State. They will have a geologist there to, to, to help prepare that report for closure.
I would imagine there's going to be a lot of contaminated soils there.
Well, we're not actually responsible for the contaminated soil, Global is. So we are going, we will have some soil that may be contaminated when we excavate that we have to deal with, but we're not. We're not responsible for, for that contamination. If there's more work that had to be done in the future, Global has to deal with that.
So how do we have assurance that when tanks get removed, that any contaminated soils will also be removed? Right, but what if?
I'm sorry. Yes, there will be a geologist on site monitoring, um, but it's not my client's responsibility to remove any more soil that might be under the tanks. There's actually an act of remediation going on that would continue. They have a, what's called an air, I believe it's a sparging system. I wasn't involved in that element of it. That Global is currently maintaining and they would continue that, which they are currently doing. They would, they would be able to continue that in the future.
And Global is the business operator? The Global is the business operator?
No, the business operator is a, a private individual that runs the store. Global leases the gasoline, sells the gasoline to them. And I'm not, I'm not exactly clear on that, that business relationship. But that's my, what I've been led to understand for that whole.
But then, I guess that's confusing then, because wouldn't Global be the one to present the plan to us of removing their, their structures?
We own the tanks. They lease them from us. They lease the gasoline from us.
And then they're the ones who are responsible for the cleanup. They're the ones who are responsible for the cleanup of the.
Yes, and it's a somewhat common thing with, with gasoline stations is that certain, sometimes those lessors. Are responsible for that element of the work and the owner just, um, leases that as part of his agreement, his contract with them.
So if, if the, if Global is responsible for the cleanup, and then the inspector during construction says you need to remove these excess materials. And Global says, no, we don't feel like paying for that, then what do we do as a board? I mean, it, there, there needs to be, the buck can't get passed back and forth.
Right, uh, Global is.
Sounds like they do. Sounds like it's already a site.
Contaminated soils throughout the city, you only have to remove them when something requires you to do that, right? So if you want to dig a footing for a new building there, then they would have to worry about the contaminated soils. Otherwise, the general guidance is leave it alone.
So if they're doing demo work, would that trigger that requirement?
If we excavates.
I believe they, they would have to dispose of any soils that come out with the tanks. Anything that is coming out with the tanks needs to be disposed of properly. But they're not making this into a larger project than tank removal.
Right, if we excavate soil when we're doing this, and it is contaminated, then yes, we manage it. We have to manage it. We, we dispose of it at, at a, at a licensed facility.
Understood. So what you're saying is you, you only have to remove that, those items which you want to remove. But then remaining contaminated soils are not within the scope of the project and will not be triggered to be removed. No, there is no connection.
Correct. It would be managed under its current project that it's currently remediated under.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think what the commission's hearing this evening is that DEC is aware of the site and they are managing it, and they will continue to manage it even after, after the tanks.
So then before us is simply an approval of doing the removal of the canopy and the tanks.
It's really the review of what's going to be left afterward. Um, so I'm very familiar with this area. This is my neck of the woods. Very disappointed to see my filling station going away, but, um, the, right now, it's a little bit of a free-for-all with the pumps that are there. And the way it's shown here is kind of how the site works. You can pull in from Hill Street and pull in from Fifth, and it's kind of a, you can go through the site. So there's massive curb cuts on both sides of the site. I think that the proposed parking is essentially what people are going to do there, uh, whether they stripe it that way or not, that's kind of how. But I think we, there's an opportunity to narrow up the curb cuts and perhaps better identify the, the way through the site. I think they could still do parking oriented that way, if they don't mind the pull-through aspect of it. So again, if you're continuing on Hill Street, you would know to make the left or the right at the light and come around onto Fifth and enter the site from that end. So you're facing nose out onto Hill. So I don't think they need to change the striping, but I think they should clarify where, where there are curb cuts. And there also like, might be some opportunity to regain some sidewalk as well. Seeing as, you know, removing those tanks is going to disturb quite a bit of area.
So following the work, the, the business will just carry on as a, as a convenience market.
Store, yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, I tend to agree with, uh, Aaron's comments. It'd be, it'd be good to see if we could restore some of the sidewalk in that area. I actually walk by there with my dog very regularly. And, uh, it seems like the store is more, more used by people on foot. I, I get the sense that right now the traffic, the car traffic is really to the filling station, not to the convenience store. So I know that eight parking spots are required, but I, I kind of doubt that they'll even be used all that much. So I guess we'll see.
So in addition to restoring some sidewalk, probably adding back some curbing. I would like for that planter to be a little more substantial. Not that the pumps and the canopy are, are beautiful, but, but they are what they are. And when they're gone, it's just going to be asshole everywhere. So I think anchoring that site, putting a good tree and some plantings would be really helpful.
And very, very low cost. You're speaking of the north end there at Adams?
Where it says existing planter, and this isn't my neighborhood, so I don't know what's like, how much of a planter is that really?
It, it's around the sign. It's not.
It's really not.
It's not much, um, but it is there.
Yeah, so I, thank you. I mean, I didn't know how old these were and.
I, I guess, if you go back to the, keep going back to the site. It just kind of, this, this plan doesn't really, it's not the way the site's used. So the way, uh, scroll down a little bit. Everybody, is that, is that why? So this is the way everybody uses the site. This one, they all pull in right along here, right? This is a parking space. Okay, this is at least, you've been at least three cars here, at least, right? And then there's, there's, there's another few cars that you can tuck in here. So the way I think I would do with the curb line is do your curb cut here, so you have the vehicles going right in front of the store. You maintain that space. So you keep the spaces that you have here, you have the drive right here, and then you can actually do these spaces like this. You don't even need to use the rest of the block. I mean, you can do whatever you want with it, but you're going to get your eight spaces without having to go any further than twenty-four feet, eighteen feet. You're going to get all the parking you show there, but with two nice curb cuts and a clean, you know, as, as a pedestrian, when you're walking here, between here and the corner is, you've got to be on high alert. Because you have no idea where people are coming from. You don't know if they're at the pump pulling out or pulling into the pump. It's just, it's a free-for-all, the whole, whole way. But you have the opportunity now to, to really close it up and, and make it more predictable for pedestrians. It's my five cents.
So is there value in, in greenscaping the point of that?
I'll tell you what, if you're going to rip the tanks out and repave it, then why not rip the tanks out, grass it? Put that, that money for the pavement into sidewalks elsewhere. Again, now we're up to like eight cents.
Snow storage, Aaron?
Snow storage, there you go, yeah.
And that's kind of what the striped area was at the north end there by, by existing planner. The, uh, but, uh, I want to, Mr. Vera, I want to be clear, and you, you, you suggest we keep the parking space along the front.
Again, I, it's just, you can do whatever you want with it.
Right, I just.
Every time I drive past there, a vehicle will be there. You can stripe it or not, it's just, it's going to be used. It's the most convenient space when nobody else is there.
I'm, because there's a, if you, yeah, hold it, yeah, perfect, perfect. Because of the way it, it, it angles in the front. Yeah, I, I, I was a little, I, I didn't want to mess with it too hard. I just said, let's just do this. I, I, I don't see putting any green there in any, in any way, shape or form because of that angle and it, it'll just be, won't work. But, um, are you asking that we, uh, more organize a, a curb cut there, uh, or?
Well, you could do, you could do perpendicular to the building if you wanted to.
Yeah, we, we had a couple of people look at it. We weren't, yeah.
And it's not intuitive if you know the site.
Yeah.
So again, I think having a drive lane that goes through, right, the way it is today.
A drive lane, you mean a twenty-four, twenty-four?
Twenty-four feet right from, right through here, you have your one parallel space here, eighty-two, you can sneak it in, I guess, someone running it quick. And then you just do your perpendicular parking right here. You're going to get the same count, and then you've got that whole, the whole tip of the site, you can turn, no storage, greens, do whatever you want with it. You don't need it for, there's no sense in paving it, you know, especially again, if, I, I can't remember where the tanks are located. I think they're, they're towards that end though, where the.
Yeah, they are up at the north.
Yeah, so when you dig all of them out, you don't have to restore the pavement, even. Yeah, I mean, you could always put it back later if you need to, but for now, restore it to one, you know? It's just an idea. It, it's not, it's more about closing up the curb cuts is really, I, beyond that, I. Design the site how it would be like. Yeah, I know. It's at least half an hour.
Are there any other comments before we get to that?
I said a, a quick comment from city staff. Will the contents or tenants of the convenience store change in any way? Okay.
Do we want to quantify the green that we're looking for?
Uh, I don't, I don't think you want to quantify.
I want a tree to anchor the site. Why not? Nothing else is going to work there.
Well, you don't need to sign anymore. You wouldn't have done a tree because it would have blocked the sign. You don't need to sign anymore.
That's great.
Well, so this is a type-two action I see from the staff report. So we would need to declare a lead agency.
No, no, type-two means no further. This is an existing site. We went back and forth on this, you know, they're removing aspects of the site. The site's not expanding. It's essentially a retrofit, so we feel it falls under the type-two.
Right, because they're not changing.
Correct, correct. Now, if this was the opposite and they were adding, I would say it would be an unlisted in that respect, but.
All right.
I would point out, though, if we're going to utilize the retrofit of the existing facility, let me read to you from the type-two list what is required in that situation. Retrofit of an existing structure and its opportunist areas to incorporate green infrastructure. So if a tree is being planted on the top end and grass for stormwater management instead of pavement, you're incorporating green infrastructure into the redesign.
That's obviously what I meant.
All right, then, if that's the case, are there any members in the public who wanted to comment on this application?
Hi, Daniel Sanders. We just renovated 128-130 Adams Street. So I would also really favor any type of landscaping on that tip. I think it's great, you know, the neighborhood has really come back a little bit, you know, not great, but it's getting there. And we're having no problem renting out the four units and any enhancement on the section of Hill and Adams would be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Any other members of the public? All right, well, in light of that, I mean, I think we've gotten some good feedback for the applicant. So the question is whether we table this indefinitely or table this to, I don't think we're in a position right now to make a decision on the site.
The speaking secret?
There's this.
Yeah, it's, we just discussed it's a type-two, so there's no further action required.
The suggestions Aaron made in terms of shifting the parking and stuff, from my perspective, that's somewhat difficult to include as a condition of approval tonight. I really think you need to take the month, let the applicant go back and put something on paper so you can confirm it meets your expectations.
That's what I was saying. I don't think, yeah, based on that discussion.
If we had something on paper that showed the curb cuts kind of where we wanted, the parking realigned, and we were talking about a sidewalk connection here or there, conditional would be, I think, adequate.
Yeah, I think we need to see the revised site plan in order to be able to make sure that it-
Can I ask more about the sidewalk? I mean, he's not proposing to build any sidewalks.
I know.
Okay, so it's paved now and it's not, I'm not even sure it's conducive to sidewalks and some of that may be on the Hill Street side. But so when you say curb cut, if I'm maintaining those parking spots, the through spots, but you're saying make a 24-foot wide curb cut for that one drive lane, you're suggesting that it might fit through. And I'll look at that. I just want to make sure what you're saying on the curb cut.
Yeah, so I just know without the pumps there, that is going to be a free-for-all. The sidewalk, the sidewalk, I think, is only necessary on the Hill Street side. I don't think you'd have to have it on the other side. But I do think you want to, you want to set curbing to delineate a 24-foot drive aisle, you know, so that people can't swing into the site at 40 miles an hour and whip through it. Because that's what's going to happen once those pumps, it's going to just be a hangout. It's going to be like Dunkin' Donuts on, what is it, Fourth or Congress? Yeah, Congress, yeah, yeah. You know, it's just, there just has to be a way to define where you want vehicles entering and exiting. Right now, the reason it is the way it is because it's a fueling station. And you wouldn't, without using city right-of-way to maneuver vehicles, you'd never get it to work nowadays.
But I can't, what I can't, I know I can't answer tonight. I have to talk to the owner about any sidewalk. I don't, I didn't see that coming as far as actually building the sidewalk there.
So normally what we have, when we have old curb cuts, one of the, one of the most common things that we run into is that the sidewalk was removed in order to put in the driveway. So we frequently ask that, when applicants come back, that they, I say we, I mean the planning commission, asks that sidewalks be put back in, and this is sort of the same situation, it's just a little bit larger.
Okay, I don't want to, I have to make sure he still wants to do it if he has to build a sidewalk that might alter thought. But let me talk to him and see what they say.
Thousand square feet of pavement, so.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, so I'll have to talk to him and see what he thinks. The sidewalk would go up to the end of Adams so that it would-
Yeah, tie in with a cross.
Now, that planter seems to, you know, I'm depicting it possibly over the line. There was no licensed, you know, survey needed for just the environmental effort here. But are we, would the sidewalk be on the Hill Street right away?
Oh, absolutely. It would be a city sidewalk.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, because there's there's more than five feet, I think, on each side that's paved. All right, let me, let me see what I can-
I think it would just be taking people on Hill Street to the corner. And then on the Fifth Avenue side, I don't think you would need, you'd still would have to set curbing, remove asphalt, or whatever is needed in order to delineate the entrance.
Yeah, yeah. It's just going to die at that Adams Street intersection.
Yeah, because that's, you can cross Fifth to keep going down Adams, or you can cross Adams and keep going downhill.
Yeah, would you like us, so I think we're going to table this application then until you can come back. Do you think you want to come back next month or for a date certain, or would you rather us table it indefinitely?
I don't know if they have an option, really. There's really no option.
Well, if they table it to next month, it keeps you on the agenda. If for some reason you can't make that date, you can request an additional one. If they table it indefinitely, you have to proactively come back to the city and ask to be placed on the next available agenda. So going over to next month keeps you in the schedule.
Right. That's fine. I'll explain that to the owner.
I would say extend, extend a five-foot sidewalk from where it ends on Hill Street, okay, near the handicap parking. And extend it to where the curb picks back up right at that landscaped island. Don't worry about the point. Right here, actually see it, see that, that's the end of the curb. So your five-foot sidewalk would go from here, straight line following the curb line to here, and then just end it. Don't touch that because that's city right-of-way. It's not on your property. And if you touch it, you're going to have to make the whole thing compliant, and that's a much larger project. So from here to there, and then in between the sidewalk, you probably have utility strip or something for grass. The sidewalk will tip down. It'll be consistent through the drive aisle and then come back up.
And the city has their own details for that, right?
And then on this side, I think, I think we I don't know, I think the board might need to be a little bit flexible there because that's already quite a, you know, it's a pretty big add-on. Yeah, I mean, granite curbing for that's going to be $50 a foot. So.
Yeah, I don't-
Quite a bit, you know, I mean, that's quite a bit.
But if I'm going to-
There may be another way to delineate the entrance there without curving, I guess is my point, right? There may be another method that they can implement there that still provides that same, you know, whether it's signage, some sort of landscaping, landscaped area or something like that might be able to delineate it.
But for the car, they're still going to, you're still going to have, Dash, if you could, can you throw the plan back up by any chance?
And I guess having the curb on Hill Street prevents the drive-through anyway. You don't need it on both sides to prevent that. I know.
But I won't, so I'm not keeping the spaces that go east-west?
Well, no.
If I have a curb there, then I-
Like I was saying, so if I'm looking at this, you've got, this is 18 feet, right?
Yeah.
So you've got another, you can do five spaces this way. You can keep the parking the way you have it. You're going to have to, the only way in and out is to back out onto Fifth Avenue, which, you know, we don't really, we don't allow it for proposed.
Let me see if I can make that fit, you know, with that going that way. I, one of the earlier iterations, I think there was a problem with getting the eight spots, but we have three-
You have six there, so I'm giving you five this way, and then you have the other one where you have to stripe it. That's six.
And I have, I have two behind it, and then, yeah, so let me see if that'll be enough.
All right. So we're going to table this then to the next month's meeting.
I'll make a motion that we table this proposal until the October 20th hearing.
I'll second the motion.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moon, yes. The proposal is tabled to October 20th.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to PLPC 2021-39, this is 525 Fourth Avenue. Good evening.
Good evening. Daniel Sanders representing Montroy Apartments. Essentially, the project is to, originally, what we had were the condensers along 114th, and we're relocating them to the alley side with a similar chain-link fence. It's enclosing the condensers that are already in the alleyway. And this would be on the other side of the doorway going into the alley from the apartments. They're under construction, as you may know already, and we're looking at getting the project completed in the next month or so. So the chain-link fence, six foot high, would be similar to the one that's already in place to the south. And it would be enclosing, again, eight condensers for the mechanical systems for the building.
Was your staff report updated? Call us a type-two?
Are there any members of the public who wanted to comment on this proposal?
Is this pretty straightforward, or is there some complications?
No, this was, this is literally as straightforward as it sounds. So what happened was is our inspectors were out doing, you know, standard code inspection on the renovation of the building. The units, I think, when they were in front of the planning commission, they were supposed to be roof-mounted, that fell through as the design progressed, and so they were installed outside. So they're, most of them are out there today. Not all of them. So it's just a screening. It's really that straightforward.
It's technically a motion to amend the previously approved site plan to relocate the condenser unit.
No issues with the amendments or anything? Okay, and if nobody else has any comments, I think we can take a vote on whether or not to change.
One other, is there any, from where they, sorry, I missed the beginning of your presentation. From where the units originally, where is there any noise difference to the people in the area? Versus where they were supposed to go?
We're relocating them to the alleyway.
Okay.
So it's off the street.
I mean, originally, they were supposed to be on top of the building?
Think they were going to be roof-mounted?
They, well, not all of them, right. And then some were going to be in the sort of alley between the two buildings, the convent and the original school. But that just would have required rerouting a lot of lines, and since it's historic, that would have been a problem for the exterior. This turned out to be a much cleaner approach.
Okay.
All right.
Fencing the greenery or anything like that, so you just get this?
No, this is just the, yeah, whatever else was on the original approval still stands.
I move, we approve this site plan, this amendment.
Right, a motion to approve amendment of the site plan to allow for a relocation of the condenser.
Okay, that's exactly what I moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right. All those in favor, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Phelan, Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moon, yes. Your application's approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys, um, you guys want to do 155-57 before you hop into 2001? 2001's going to be, I think, a little bit more involved.
Okay.
That's okay.
Oh, you're reading the address.
Yeah. Yeah, I think that's fine. So we'll move ahead.
Thanks, right? It's much more straightforward. Okay, yes. Much like, much like that last item.
We are going to skip ahead to PLPC 2021-43. This is 155-157 River Street.
Hello. I'm Neil Pallone. I'm working with the current owner and the prospective owner of 155 River Street. We're here to change a little bit, previous approval that Russ was here in the audience, the current owner, had, we had received in 2016, maybe 15, something. The use is largely the same for the proposed buyer. We are subtracting, the original proposal had a new construction parking structure addition that is going to be omitted in the current project. Otherwise, the upper floors will be apartments, lower floors will be commercial. I have seen, I kind of, I'm working both with the current owner and the possible future owner. I have seen a variety of description, project descriptions that had unit counts and things like that. And I was wondering if it wouldn't be too much of a bother to make sure that we're not limited on that count. We haven't designed the project per se. So that may be plus or minus a few units. So there's no change to the footprint. The project may or may not seek NPS tax credit program, historic tax program. Right? Doesn't get any easier.
So it's currently a warehouse designation?
Sorry?
It's currently used as a warehouse?
It's currently vacant.
It's currently vacant, but it's, I should say, it's- It's currently vacant, but it's, I should say, it's approved use, yeah.
So the.
Or zoning.
Yes, these, these plans are the old plans, and so do not take them literally.
Yes, there's, the, essentially, it's an existing structure, and there's no, there's no site work, and architecturally, the building's gonna look the way it does now.
Correct.
A lot of the stuff that's in flux and up in the air is all internal to the building, which isn't really planning commission purview, right? Um, to be for zone, essentially are, are most liberal zone, basically anything goes, mayhem. So all of the uses that are proposed are allowed by rights.
So the, the stairs and sidewalk.
Is not going to happen.
Okay.
Or if it does, it'll be under a separate filing.
So this is procedurally, is there any limitation on how long this remains an approved project or an approved proposal?
Oh, it's not approved, right? It's currently not approved. It was approved. The approval lapses in six months if you don't obtain a building permit, right? That's why people come back for extensions.
This is brand new then.
This is essentially.
But we're looking at old drawings. I'm just a little confused as to what we're doing.
You're, you're looking at old drawings that were resubmitted with some white-out on them.
But you didn't white out the ramp and the stair.
I did not, um, not to throw Russ under the bus, but I did not submit these documents. I was, yeah, I was, that is true. I was out of town and we were trying to make the deadline, so the, and the reason, well, we're, we're here because the, uh, the prospective buyers wanna make sure all approvals that can be out of the way are out of the way, to make sure they can do the project they want to do.
So really, it's a, it's an existing beautiful building, and you're not proposing to change the exterior of the building, you're just proposing a change of use.
You got it.
Yes.
That's why I moved him ahead.
Thank you.
Next time, can we do administrative?
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Yeah, if, if there's, if anything is being proposed to alter the outside of the building, to add in the stairs, any, anything outside of this building, whether it's shown in this plan or not, if, if it's gonna be done, it, it has to be seen again.
Okay.
This is just to get them in, start renovating, essentially.
Okay.
Proposed buyers, uh, their goal is to have a building permit for the beginning of the year.
I mean, there's nothing really for debate. No, I don't. The exterior, there's no site plan changes, there's nothing, so it's just a simple.
And I know the staff, uh, reported, suggested tabling this, but is there a reason why we couldn't just approve it tonight?
That, uh, commented table was, was not made completely accurately, so there's no, no reason to, to go by it.
Okay, I just wanted to check.
I know, in, in fact, um, Andy, is this unlisted or type two? There, it's an existing structure.
It's an existing structure, it's a change of use.
Yeah.
In the existing structure, correct.
It's, it certainly affects more than four thousand gross.
And it's not rehabilitation in kind. It's, it's a change of use.
Yeah.
So I think it is.
Okay, so this would be an unlisted action, so the two actions of the planning commission we need to take this evening is lead agency, it's unlisted, so it doesn't need to be coordinated, so you can immediately determine your lead agency and then take action, and then a site plan approval.
Site plan another day, or site plan today?
It's up to you, I mean, the documentation is not going to be substantially different than what you guys have in front of you right now.
Now, let's.
Yeah, now, we shouldn't look to the applicant for advice, but it's the same advice I'm giving you, but.
Well, I guess we start by declaring ourselves lead agency, does sound like a good motion.
I'll make a motion that the planning commission of the city of Troy serves lead agency for Seeker.
I second.
All right, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. And then.
A motion for a negative declaration.
I will make a motion, uh, that we make a negative declaration with regard to Seeker.
I second that.
Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moan, yes, so motion passes.
And then next would be site plan.
I make a motion that we approve the proposed site plan for this proposal.
I second.
Do, do we expect a revised site plan to be submitted? If we're expecting that, then I'm just wondering, do we need to approve it? Right, that, I'm just making sure I understood what was said earlier. Not, right?
No, no, no revised site plan required. Unless the scope of the project.
Yeah, I mean, look, if we, if we drive by and we see them putting in a staircase.
Just making sure.
They're gonna get a stop work order, and they're gonna be back here for permitting on the staircase. Right. Yeah.
Okay, so, but.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Yeah.
Okay, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spelling?
Yes.
Sarah Winger?
Yes.
Roddy Yagan?
Yes.
And Anthony Moan, yes. Proposal's approved.
Thank you.
Okay, last item on the agenda, PLPC twenty twenty-one forty-four. Two thousand and one Fifth Avenue.
Good evening, and Danny Sanders, Harris Sanders Architects, representing two thousand and one Fifth Avenue LLC, I, Ryan Jankow here from two thousand and one Fifth Avenue, and Michael Chapa with Jankow Companies. The proposal is to renovate two thousand one Fifth Avenue and make the building formerly office space into apartments with adding two stories above the existing three-story building. Architectural standpoint, maintaining the existing brick facades on three-story building, and then just overlapping the new cementitious hardy material, hardy panel material proposed over third floor and a couple locations, but otherwise doing a two-story building, two-story framework and structure atop the existing three-story building. The site plan will essentially stay the same with some modifications for a couple of tri- islands, and there seemed to have been a clarification required on the parking of the, of the site, and we were just out there again and noted that there is fifty available spaces. Although that outline on the map right there doesn't necessarily add up to that because of, although it's close to the property line, as a Google overview of the site, it missed a couple of potential spaces, but we'll clarify that. Again, it's still forty-three units, and the bedroom count is essentially the same with amenities and commercial space in the first floor. And cleaning up the landscaping and, and the like is shown on Hirschberg and Hirschberg's plans on the site itself, and restriping, repaving, cleaning up the landscaping adjacent to the building, maintaining the electrical service and the transformers that are on the site. And the trash and location for pickups will still be a long grand, most likely, and we're available for any questions.
Is this framing pretty much the same as buildings like Starbuck Island and, and things like that?
Correct. And we wanted to break up the material a little bit on the, on the addition, and again, of course, it's a modern addition to a building that's been there for a number of years, so, but the bricks in good condition, so, but we would never be able to match it, so we decided to still be more of a panel, lighter framework appearance on the upper floors.
What's the height of the building?
The overall height will end up being an additional twenty-eight to thirty-two feet. That includes a parapet.
Twenty-eight on top of what's there?
Twenty-eight on top of an existing thirty-five.
Okay, thank you.
Are the balconies real balconies, or are they just Juliet?
They're Juliet.
I do, but the windows, like, fully.
Correct.
Can you go back to the map, too?
You know King's Landing?
Yeah.
Across the street. Yeah, it's across the street.
Give you a street view.
Yeah, no, I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So there's no, there's really no hardscape, right? When we, when we met the site.
I was thinking we're over here.
It's just, it's just adding two stories. Yeah.
This is really just a.
It was a renovation several years ago to open up the glazing in the building, and that's what you're reflecting now, and we're staying along with that rhythm on the addition. So those windows are about four years old right now.
Of the existing stories, only the first one would be commercial, and this proposal.
This was in front of us.
Yeah.
I'm sorry?
Oh, I was saying, of, of the existing stories of the building, only the first one would be commercial?
Correct. And amenity space for the residents.
I like the idea of, uh, an, of additional space, modifying the building, extending it. This aesthetically and architecturally reminds me of Vicenna that got built, Vicenna. That's not my preferred aesthetic for, for the city of Troy. I think that the news would be an example of a, a building that I feel fits in very well as a piece of new construction or an extension. Sarah, I think that your opinion is probably the strongest for the architectural component of the building, but I would prefer to see something more traditional in terms of materials and overall aesthetic.
Sort of why we brought the new material down a little bit, just to break up, so it didn't look like a, just an addition on top of the building.
Yeah, there, there is nothing traditional about the existing building, and, and it's, it looks great now, like you, you did a really good job. Well, it makes a huge difference, it really does.
Well, to the look, it did not.
Yeah, I agree, well, I appreciate that the, you know, the bays are kind of reaching down and, and trying to engage with the bricks on the lower stories, but I think more needs to happen. It's, it just, it does look like you're not fooling anybody. It's two new stories on the existing building, so there's gotta, even if it's, even if it's just applique, take that new material and, like, take it all the way down to the, the soldier coursing or something.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I don't, I, I'm not even suggesting that you re-clad over all the brick, but just like engage the corners of the building, because at the corners, it's literally three stories of brick and then a lid of, of cement more. And I, I don't know, I mean, you mentioned metal, maybe metal would I really don't like making, making architectural suggestions to well-established in our community.
Well, I, I, I think what you're saying about the corners is something that I appreciate as far as comment that I think we could look at, at least on Federal Street, draping that third floor with the same treatment. Just on the corners, yeah, just as the corners. I wouldn't really like to see, I use this expression, I think this building sort of works like this pretty well, where wraps the two materials fairly well, as opposed to dominating one from a design standpoint, to bring it any further down, I think really does a negative appearance to the scale of it, you know, four stories of the material, for instance. So we did engage in a little bit of the play, uh, but as far as looking at that corner, maybe we should do it that way and, and design it in that way. I think we could definitely look at that.
Yeah, I, I think you're right, it's federal, it's federal, that's.
Yeah, no, and I, and I appreciate the comment, as I said, it's, it's definitely something, I don't think it would be too much to just bring this to us. Yeah, and I, yeah.
That would be pretty balanced, I think.
Right. Yeah, I mean, it's definitely a corner building in that respect, so appreciate the comment.
Yeah, I agree, anything that you can do to, um, to jazz it up in a good way would be great, I'm just afraid we're going to get a corridor of mediocrity and I, I really wouldn't want to see that happen. That's not my favorite. But I, I hear you.
Yeah, I'm a little, I mean, I love gray.
Love gray.
I'm just ner-, I'm a little nervous with the, the cement board and the neutral. I have no, I mean, I have no idea, like, could you, could you do it for the same price with, with metal cladding or no?
Probably not, no, not the cladding, but there's enough.
Okay, you can't even get it, right?
Right, yeah, metal cladding is an issue, but in terms of color, I think we can just review maybe some other colors. I don't think we're married to a color right now, we did want to differentiate a little bit where we could within one family, so we'll look at that.
You're not looking for like a city station area.
No.
No, and like, I love the, the Vicenna project, I think it's, I think it's really attractive, but this building has a, it can have its own identity and it's going to look like, it's going to look like it sort of wants to be Vicenna and, and with King's Landing across the street. Like, I think you could be even a little more bold.
Is there an option to embrace the, the, the look of something being built on top of the bottom, even if it were a, let's say you did go with a brick avenue where it weren't a matching brick, but it was intentionally juxtaposed.
Oh, I'd love it.
With a, a banding across the middle, understood.
The previous application up on Congress Street, 561, you were talking about two tones, like two different types of brick would look out of place. Obviously, that's a much smaller scale than, than this, right, which is two brand-new floors on top of three, would, you wouldn't do that here, would you? Two different types of brick.
You could even do selective replacement on the lower story to tie it to the upper story.
That would be pretty substantial work.
I, I.
I mean, we're, we're, we under-, I, I think the problem with bringing in brick is that honestly, the, the brick will look new and it'll really fight the brick that's been there, no matter what you do. Yeah, that's why there's a, yeah, I, I guess the thing is, as far as the material use, it's, we did go through several different potentials, but to mess with brick or to add more brick or different color brick, I, it just didn't feel right, it got very busy, especially since that wouldn't be the only material. Right, that was the only way that that could have.
But your brick is in good shape, right?
Yeah. Yeah, bricks in good shape.
Yeah, but I, I think Dan, right?
Yes.
Dan gets what, what we're just.
Yeah, I, I think we can take it to one more level. Yeah, we got to get the right color. I, I have a good idea what color works with brick.
And.
What are you talking about, banding?
Yeah. Because it's not symmetrical.
I feel that that's a strong part of the Troy.
Well, it's, yeah, and it's there a little bit, they've got the soldier course and the existing bricks, but.
Look at it as a corner.
I think what works with the existing building is it's really simple. Yeah, and it's actually a fun, I think it's fun because Grand Street like has so much going on and that this is just this clean box of brick, but like, well done. So, yeah, conceptually, I, I don't struggle with it, I just think it's a little tweaking can make it better and maybe not gray.
Yes.
Or even like a dark gray, I don't know.
Yeah.
We'll find a color.
So, so aside from the architectural input, are there any other concerns the commissioners have?
As structural, I mean, I'm assuming structural analysis is just a given, that they'll be doing the work necessary to provide. Yeah.
Well, yeah, you were saying the medical use of this, the building essentially is still like adding two more stories.
Yeah, structurally, yeah.
It was almost pre-designed for it.
It's a, it's a.
It's not most of that, because we're going to declare lead agency.
You can declare lead agency, you can even do Seeker if you wanted to. Um, the only other item that was on the staff report that we didn't talk about was the parking, but.
Yeah, I was about to ask.
The applicant has 50 spaces, I don't know if the plan demonstrated exactly where all 50 of those are, but it's shared, I believe, with the, the adjacent landowner.
Well, we have our own, our survey, it's a banding group.
Right. So it's, it's 50, it's 50 spaces, puts them at one per unit and then seven additional for the office. I, no, you don't need any parking, right? I mean, by code.
43, 30, 35 apartments, we have to make that pay your office during the day, that's double up.
Yeah.
Can you speak about the, uh, commercial, the planned commercial space usage on the bottom? Is there, uh, both, so is there any tenant and expected for the space? Do you have any plans for EV charging stations? Yeah.
So again, if, you know, the commissions plan this evening is to take any action, I think, lead agency. I think given this, I think you could make a secret determination if you wanted to. But then in addition to the architectural, revised architectural elevations, if there's anything else that you want the applicant to come prepared with for October 20th, we would need to know.
I, yes, I do think that even though the, you're not required to provide parking, the, the site plan just isn't clear enough, so we want to see that.
Yeah, but we got to clarify. Yeah, yeah, it needs to be better than.
And, and even, even though it's not required, the, the way they're going to design the parking lot could result in an environmental impact and also visual character is, is a consideration in your environmental analysis, so since you've asked for those two things to be provided, I would suggest you not take action on secret tonight, the clear lead agency definitely, but leave it open until you see those things, you can make a determination next month.
So we'll clarify that parking, we didn't count on site, and now better. We got either 49 or 50.
Hey, do we have a motion to declare the commission lead agency?
I'm happy to make a motion to declare ourselves the planning commission of the city of Troy as lead agency for this project.
I will second the motion.
Can I go vote, Barbara Higbee?
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin?
Yes.
Sarah Wenger?
Yes.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes. Rick. I don't think there's anybody in the public here who wants to.
There is not, just us.
Okay, so unless the commissioners have any other comments or suggestions to the applicant, I think we can table this to October 20th meeting.
I'll make a motion that we table this proposal until the October 20th planning commission hearing.
I'll second, and we're going to vote, Barbara Higbee.
Yes.
Suzanne Spellin.
Yes.
Sarah Wenger.
Yes.
Roddy Jagan.
Yes.
Anthony Moan, yes, the application's table to October 20th, thank you. Okay. I move we adjourn tonight's meeting, do we have a second? All in favor?
Hi.
Sit here.